The regular meeting of Independence School District Number 695. Lisa can take local.
Director Ronis Soder, here.
Director Rice, here.
Director Bobby Simon.
Director Lappi, here.
Director Aha.
Here.
Chair Casey.
Here. Anybody in the audience wishing to address the board?
Yes.
Public comment.
You're on agenda next.
Oh, we are. I didn't know.
You reserve a spot.
Thank you.
Now, we will have recognition of guests and visitors. Betsy and Brady.
Very much.
Hi folks.
Hi.
We are here this evening to obtain board approval for ISD 695's comprehensive art plan, which you have right in front of you. Betsy and I have led the CAP committee that is in partnership with the Purpatch Arts Center, which is the governing state agency for all arts and education in Minnesota. So, we would like to just recognize our CAP committee, which is Sarah Hateso, Shannon Kishel Roach, Ryan Fritus, Larry Baker, Denny Borich, Jennifer Rowley, Alora Rice, and Brian Hayek. We want to honor your time this evening. So, we'd have you please turn to page seventeen. And you will see here that there are three strategic directions that we plan on focusing during this three-year partnership with Purpatch. With board approval, we will begin the action steps during this next school year, which is the year two. Now, I will hand the podium over to Betsy.
Okay. So, with regards to our strategic, our focus on year two, we are going to focus on primarily strategic goal number one, some of the action steps dealing specifically with curriculum standards and pedagogy. But I wanna, the most important thing we wanna stress this evening is if you could please now turn to page eighteen. We wanna focus on the strategic direction goals that are aligned with our district-wide goals. So, if you look at the page of top of eighteen, we have our strategic direction number one, and then it's aligned with our CAP outcome, and then also aligned with ISD's academic strategic plan goal number three. And then we have our action steps. If you could also please turn to page, next, turn to page twenty. On page twenty, you'll see at the top, our strategic direction goal number two is specifically aligned with our ISD 695 academic strategic plan goal number one and the outcomes and action steps that we're focusing on. Then, if you could please turn to page twenty-one, you'll see at the top, our strategic direction number six is aligned with our ISD 695 academic strategic plan goal number two. And so, I thought that was really important that we've, we've showed you case study because that's really the meat of the strategic plan. This is a very long document, but that is really the heart of what we're doing in the next two, year two and year three. Ultimately, what is most important to our CAP committee are our students, community, and building bridges of connection between them. We want to provide students with great programming as well as creative and cultural opportunities while making strong connections with our local community, our business community, and Blue Street families. We are dedicated to these focus areas and greatly appreciate your support. So, at the end, if you turn to page twenty-two, it kind of takes you through kind of the thank you and some pictures as well. There's also pages on after page sixteen if you'd like to see our wonderful students. But Brady and I, right now, would like to leave you with some thanks, and he's gonna pass out a little card for you. And we'd like to open it up for any questions you might have at this time.
Alls I can say is this is great.
Good job.
Do you wanna, do you wanna share just real quick, in thirty seconds, how you're connecting all the arts? Because I think sometimes that gets lost. There's so much more than just your introduction to art class. Do you mind sharing a little bit about how you're including all the arts?
So, we've been meeting as a, as not only all specialists have been meeting through this process, we had the most amazing workshop, Purpatch put on a workshop for us as a department of specialists and the CAP committee, the individuals at our honor committee, and it was just fantastic. We, we were able to come together and people brought their expertise. You know, what Mr. Fritus does is amazing. Mr. Baker, Sarah at that elementary. And we wanna start really kind of driving it together with our community and reaching out and doing some events as well. And so, coming together, I think, as specialists, I, I, I hope I'm answers.
Exactly what I'm talking about.
We're gonna come together, work on our scaffolding K-12 with curriculum, but then also plan some community events as well through the CAP committee. And please add to this, Brady.
I had just wanted to additionally say that the scaffolding is throughout K through twelve. So, we're trying to build that curriculum even more so in art class and not only in art class.
But also gen aheads. We wanna make sure that we're doing cross-curricular connections. And so, that's also one of our focuses, to make sure that, you know, all teachers are have, you know, there's arts and, and culture and things that we do across the spectrum of, of disciplines. There's also in your card a little QR code at later when you feel like watching a special little video that Mr. Ba made. Any other questions?
Shows faces our students even more.
Yeah.
Just, just one, yeah, I'm saying, maybe I'm confused. Is there a funding through Purpatch for this?
Yes, so, so ultimately, we do have funding to provide some professional development and curriculum writing time. But we're also seeking out other sources through Purpatch as well to provide extra incentives of getting together and doing curriculum writing and community events, if that means like a foundations grant. We'd really love to, to do a particular community, community event this next year too, so.
That's a great group, that Purpatch group. You know, that's, they're wonderful.
Yeah, very supportive and amazing.
I'm just thinking of other sources, and when they come to my mind, I'll talk to you guys.
Okay, great.
I'm trying to think.
Thank you.
I got an idea.
Any other questions?
I, I do have a question. So, on, on page eleven, you have equity, diversity, access, and inclusion. Just, so, when you talk about differentiation of instruction, does that mean you yourself change the instruction methods? Or do you bring somebody in?
That would be throughout different workshops that happen and having teachers to collaborate with each other in order to be able to build on each other's teaching already and offer experiences that we already might know to, to have our teachers already hone their craft.
Okay. And then continue to offer programming beyond current student, student activities. Give me an example of.
So, our specific example is the, the Chisholm Chamber is trying to revitalize the downtown. There's a whole revitalization. So, we would love to provide, you know, some of that empty buildings in our downtown area. One example would be, I would have art in the windows on display so that people when they're downtown can see that artwork and kind of, it brings more people down into downtown. So, that's one example.
Okay. Well, that's, yeah.
And there's quite a few.
That's how I tie it together, I guess.
Yeah, there's, there's.
You know, I just look at one thing down there and one thing here, and when you tie it together like that, it makes sense.
Cool. Thank you.
And I think it's also making the community aware of what amazing things are already happening in our schools.
Okay.
So, I think sometimes there's a disconnect that they're not aware of, particular awesome experiences that the kids are having. So, we wanna sort of promote that as well. And even like advertising, doing flyers, doing like videos and stuff, having a, a greater presence in that way.
Well, and you guys just sent us, did you guys ever get my stuff I sent you? I, you guys asked for.
Yeah, photos and stuff.
Yeah, photos and stuff, yeah. And I had said that you should look into the auditorium because they have tons of photo albums and from way back, way back.
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you.
So, we will probably have this on our next agenda for approval?
Oh, okay. Yeah.
All right. I shouldn't say approval, I should say consideration.
Well, we're looking for school board approval, right?
Yes, we are.
Clear vote, Mr. Casey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys.
Recognition still of guests and visitors. I guess at this point, I'm gonna have Alex introduce both of our new staff.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. With us tonight is Morgan Anderson. She is gonna do the payroll benefits job in the business office. She has background doing payroll and benefits. She started two weeks ago, and she's off to an excellent start. And plenty of good things to say about her. And Noah Cazer is starting on Monday as the business manager. So, we're happy to, happy to have them.
Yes.
Yeah, very much.
I will welcome both of you. And I, I know Morgan's really gotten a, a go of it, and Alex is saying that she's doing a fine job over there. So, one of these days, we'll cut the string. Alex will be happy.
For vacation?
Yeah.
He already seems more relaxed.
So, and, but to both of you, welcome. And anything that you need from us as a board, or the superintendent, or, or Lisa, or the principals, please reach out to us because that's, we wanna keep you. So, and Alex does too. He wants us to keep you. Thank you and welcome.
And thanks for coming today, both of you.
Yeah, definitely.
Next up, we have reports. Mr. Hayek, looks like he's ready to.
The first thing that we're planning for next year is a direct admissions program through MDE. So, we're partnering with MDE. The direct admissions program is basically an easier way for those college-bound kids to get into colleges that they are wanting to go and also that they are qualified to go to. So, basically, there's a three-tier system of colleges. Tier one is the toughest to get into. You know, our top kids will qualify for that. Tier two, next, and then tier three. They, once they're in this program and they find a college that they wanna go, that's in the right tier, they do not have to go through the admissions progress or process. They're automatically admitted into the college. So, they don't have to write essays, they don't have to do all the paperwork. It's kind of a direct thing through MDE to the college. Our role is basically just getting parents to sign up for it. It's a volunteer thing because they are sharing some personal information. And then, making sure that the kids end up where they wanna be, grade-wise. And so, that is gonna start next year with our eleventh graders, and we'll let you know how it goes. But it's a pretty interesting thing. Second thing, going back to the art department and Bark Design, they brought a bunch of kids through their advanced art class, and Carrie McDonald kinda helped set this up for our, and Mrs. Carol, obviously, for our pathways program. And they used one of our kids' designs for the pathways. And I'll, once I get a bunch of these.
That's Laura Mangenstein, by the way. She won the, the designer contest for that.
So, once we get a bunch of these, you all get them, put them on the back window of your car, things like that. So, it was very, I think the kids really enjoyed it. We learned a lot from Bark Design. Really John did a very good job with that. On another note, we have a kickball tourney tomorrow, seven through twelve. It starts first hour and goes for six hour. Not everyone's out there at once, but it should be a fun day. There is gonna be, are you gonna talk about this tomorrow? I'm sorry. I might, I might be stealing his thunder. I'll let that, I'll let him give a speech about that. And then graduation, seven o'clock in the auditorium. Mr. Casey and Ms. Renz Soder are handing out the diplomas. Everything is set. Thursday seniors will be at the bus garage at nine-thirty to go to the grade schools and do a little parade in their costumes. Oh, they're costumes. Caps and gowns. Their caps and gowns. And then we go back to the auditorium for practice if you wanna come and see what it's about. And then after practice, they have a barbecue outside. That is the plan for Thursday for seniors.
Do they have a speaker?
Uh, the speaker is Mr. Baxter.
Oh.
And that's about it?
Any questions for Mr. Hayek?
I'd say good luck for the rest of the week.
We're holding on.
Okay.
Ms. Winters.
Yeah, good evening. We finished up, we had our K-6 spring sing. And again, it was a packed house, so there was tons of family. It was a great turnout again. Mr. Baker did a fantastic job with that. We had a literature show in our first grade and third grade classrooms and had a wonderful parent turnout for that too. They came, they sat in the author's chair, and they got their picture taken. And so, they were presenting young authors, which is a great thing for kids to be seen as authors and writers. We had a field day at the elementary that was at the football field. And Ms. Dewhurst and all the helpers, the senior high helpers, they, we had great turnout with that. Mr. Casey was there that day, I think, helping. And the bond had a mini version. I know Ms. Rice was there. They were in the gym. I was a little bit more claustrophobic because of the rain, but they had a great time with that too as well. Third grade toured the elementary building, so we're gearing up for them to become fourth graders. And sixth grade headed off to the high school. They toured their building, so getting excited, just getting familiar too with what's to come. We had an alumni grad, I'm glad Ms. Johnson is here from UND. She graduated with electrical engineering, and she did some substation design on things with the kid where they looked at control centers and switches. And I'm sure she could tell you on and on, but I think the kids were mesmerized by that, you know, all the things and the opportunity. It was good to have a graduate that wanted to engineering that came back and presented to our, our science class. So, that was awesome. We have currently our kindergarten registration. We have eighteen in each room. But again, this is early. We tend to end up getting more, you know, as the summer goes on. But we have, we have a solid eighteen in each room. And then, our end of the year PTSA party is Thursday at the bond from six to seven, or four to six. So, come on over, there is a dunk take. I don't know who is gonna be in that dunk take, but.
I saw some names. I could see some names, I believe.
There were some names, there were some names. I just hope the sun shines. I mean, it's a little bit warmer than it was today. But, yeah, it's been another great year. It's hard to believe it's as of close to this year. So, we, and we did just have our kindergarten celebration. We're entering the students that'll graduate in 2036. So, their parents were here with the kids. So, and PTSA, our new kindergarteners that'll start next year, they, we designed a T-shirt for them, and it said graduating class of 2037. I don't know if you saw that on Facebook, but that was. So, kids were very excited to be getting their T-shirts. And it'll be, yeah, very, so, yeah, that's great stuff. Any questions?
You did say twenty thirty-six.
This was, so this year, we, we had our celebration for our kindergarteners for 2036. And, yeah, 2037, we had our new ones come and do. Our sneak peek. We'll all be around by twenty.
Sorry, but I won't be on this board anymore.
Any other questions for Ms. Winters?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you as well.
Travis or Teresa?
Good evening. Just wanted to stop by and say hi. I haven't been here in a while. So, figured since I was here for the, for the ceremony, which was great, even though it was a little wet. Of course, it took the brunt of the rain. But that was great. So, just wanted to come by and fill you in on a couple things. End of the year, we were wrapping up our athletics. Baseball won their first game today, so they're in the second game. I imagine they're starting anytime now, or they already started for that. So, that's good. We'll see how that ends up. They will, I think, win or lose now, they'll play Thursday. So, um.
Where are they playing?
What's that?
Where are?
Uh, in Cherry today. Yep, they play Carlton their first game, Cherry their second game. So, we'll see how that goes. Other than that, end of the year party on Thursday, Mr. Beam and myself will be in the dunk tank as two of the, two of the wonderful people that volunteered. I think Mrs. Winters is gonna be in there too.
Dead last, so everyone can go home.
Um, but in your next packet that you get will be a little bit more information from me on end of the year numbers, uh, numbers I have to submit to the high school leader as far as unduplicated male and female by grade, things of that nature by sport. So, that'll all be broken down. I did email that to Lisa to include for you guys. I'll also be coming with a proposal for you guys as far as fees go for next year. I wanna get that out as soon as we can. And we're gonna make a big push for everyone to register electronically and, and get that rolling. So, more to come, but just figured I'd come and stop in and say the end of the year is, is wrapping up quickly. And it's been a good year, so. With that, the last thing I have for you is our golf scramble. June twenty-first is our golf scramble. Was lucky enough to get him, convince him to let me have it on a Friday. And so, if you got those clubs ready, Bob?
Where?
Wolf Ridge, uh, on June twenty-first. Registration's at nine, tee-off at ten, eighteen, just like last year. Lunch in between, and then we have dinner at Tom and Jerry's. So.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
Any questions for me?
Any other questions for Mr. Baki?
Good noon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Allen? No?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
I'm showing my friend.
Mike, I always save you for last.
Yeah.
Cause I know you're.
Couple things here. So, nice turnout today considering the weather. But, and Johnson did hire a construction manager. His name is Todd. I can't remember his last name. He'll be coming next week to stop by and do a meet, and have a meetup with you tomorrow when you're back. So, so it'll be nice to have somebody on the construction side full-time. We're gearing up for summer cleaning, gym floors, hallways, classrooms. So, we coordinated with Hannah and Pam on, on those things. We're gonna do the kitchen hoods with their inspections. Fire extinguisher annuals coming up this summer. Joe's already tearing down, or tearing into the boilers. So, that's been off for a while. And then, started going through some historical items. Mr. Hayek, we kinda looked at a couple things. Looking at bringing some stuff across, see what we can find here. And then, as Travis mentioned, transportation's kinda winding down with all the spring activities. Just a couple things left with playoffs. And then we'll be rolling right into preventative maintenance schedules on the buses and small fleet that are still. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Fritu? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Greg.
Anybody else in the audience from our staff? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, approving the agenda. Board any additions or subtractions you would like to entertain?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion by Director Lappi. Supported by Director Ronis Soder. Any discussion? All those in favor, you can go up and say a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, approving the consent agenda. These are the minutes of the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, we're either meeting. A motion. Motion by Director Aha.
Support.
Supported by Director Rice. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, personnel. Motion to approve the hiring of Kayla Schorer to job number two sixty-nine, ASD's special education instructor, extended school year effective June third, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Director Ronis Soder.
Support.
Supported by Director Lappi. Any discussion? Kayla, I hope I pronounced your last name correctly.
It reminds us of lawyer, lawyer.
Lawyer. My, my apologies.
It's okay.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve the hiring of Denise Pairs, job number two seventy, paraprofessional, extended school year effective June third, twenty twenty-four. All motion. Motion by Director Aha.
Support.
Supported by Director Ronis Soder. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the hiring of Kylie Leidler to job number two seventy, paraprofessional, extended school year effective June third, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Director Lappi.
Support.
Supported by Director Rice. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the resignation of Amanda Judge, paraprofessional, Von Steffensrude, effective May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. All motion. Motion by Director Aha.
Support.
Supported by Director Lappi. Any discussion? I'd like to thank Amanda, Amanda, for being with us. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, motion to accept the resignation of Bethany Herman, paraprofessional, Von Steffensrude, effective May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Motion by Director Lappi.
Support.
Supported by Director Rice. Any discussion? I'd like to thank Ms. Herman for her service to the school district. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, administrative business. Motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget as presented. I think you have that in front of you. Alex, if you want to.
Yes. Everyone should have a copy of this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just gonna go through different funds quickly here. I'll move right along, but feel free to jump in if you have any questions, guys. General funds, our operating fund, that's with the revenue of nine point seven million and expenditures of ten million eighty-eight thousand. That's in deficit of about three hundred and seventy-six thou. So, a lot of different moving parts here. COVID money dried up, gone. But the state did provide what they called historic funding with additions to the special education cross subsidy. There's some different pots of money for, you know, librarian support, Kian education. So, the net effect of the new funding with the loss of the COVID funding kinda kept us right at that between, you know, three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand of like I said in the operating fund. I'm, I'm comfortable with that based on what Chisholm has in reserves and the fund balances, at least for, for this next year. And I'm comfortable handing, you know, for someone else to inherit that number for now.
Alex, I have one question. Did they put anything on the formula?
Yes.
They did?
They, I, they did a, it's a two-year deal, and it was a. Four percent. Four.
Four.
Four and four.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and that is some.
Flipped it?
Yeah, yes. For the food service, a lot of questions there. Fund two, I was advised to just basically roll forward what you have because we don't know how long these meals are gonna be paid for by the state. And if we're gonna have to start charging families again, how the collection process is even gonna go. So, this is more or less unchanged from prior year. Transportation showing a little bit of a deficit there, mostly as a result of, I'd say, a little bit more special transport than we had, had in the past, special transport than banner. We need, it's pretty well-balanced budget. On four, fund five, I put in a little extra in the expenditures just because we always seem to spend a little more in capital than, than what we plan to, but maybe not, hopefully that is a balanced budget. For now, I put that in there just as a little cushion in case something comes up, you know, if you start the project and find something, you know, expensive. Fund six, seventeen point five million. It's kinda misleading, there's actually not, there's actually no revenue. That all came in fiscal year twenty-three. So, we're spending on revenue received last year from bond issues. But I just put that in there so it doesn't show in eighteen million dollar deficit in total. So, seventeen point five million is what we are expecting to spend on the construction project next fiscal year. So, more than half of the total cost. Fund seven, the debt redemption. Fund seven, the debt redemption. That's pretty much an in and out. The revenue comes off, comes in our levy in the form of a levy and the expenditures are paying in bills for bonds that were previously issued. Fund nine, trust scholarships, in and out fund. And the same for the fund 11, extracurricular activities. The difference being one of them the students control and the other has a teacher advisor. Fund 45, the OPEB trust, 150,000 revenue. I think that's probably light, but that, that would be interest earnings on that balance. So I would say it's probably more than that, just to be conservative, 150,000 in revenue. The 291,000 would be the cost of our retiree health insurance payments. And I thought, I think we discussed this earlier, but we're going to plan to not levy again this, this fall, the summer of this fall. Because this trust balance can only be used for that. And we ended up returning the levy money back in it, so. And that's, that should be 47, the last one. OPEB debt service, and that's just servicing the bonds in and out that we issued back in 2009 for the OPEB trust. So for a total revenue of 30.883 million and expenses of 31 million, 380,000. That's 497,547.
One question. On the OPEB trust. So our expenditures, and this is strictly for retiree health, it's for nothing else.
Right.
We can withdraw from that fund to cover retiree and we're going to do that.
Yes. Any discussion? Ask, well, should we should? And we've talked a little bit about it, Mark and I. And, and we've talked a little, but yeah, I mean, I think, I don't know what happens to a trust if.
If it's unused or you don't have a function for it.
Right. I don't know.
Actually, yeah, but we still have a function.
Yes, but function is, yeah.
It's a finite amount of time, man.
Take care of the retiree health.
Yep.
That's exactly it. Yep. Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Alex? I just want to say this, you know, this budget stuff, it's a crapshoot. It is. You take a wild guess and you hope you're right and there's so many variables in here. But, you know, through the years, we've gone through these budgets and everything like that. And I know, Alex, you've done a fine job. I really appreciate what you've done through the years that you've been here.
Thank you.
And I know it's not easy, but I know you're doing it education, educated guess.
Yep.
And it is what it is.
Get some direction.
Yeah.
What we think.
That's right. That's right.
But yes, there's a lot of variables.
I appreciate the work and all of our business managers have done, I do. And again, we'll just keep going. Thank you, Alex. Appreciate it. Any other questions for Alex? I'll entertain a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2025 budget as presented. All motion. Motion by Director Aha.
Support.
Supported by Director Lappi. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve the annual renewal subscription for frontline education applicant tracking with proactive recruiting in the amount of $6,474.89 for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. All motion. Motion by Director Aha.
Support.
Supported by Director Lappi. Any discussion? Can you elaborate on this just a little bit?
So we have an online application system, so everything, it's, the benefits of it is not that we wouldn't keep files, but we can go back and look at these applications for years and organize them. It's easy to access. We hit one button and prints off everything from their resume to the reference checks to the online piece that they got to fill out. So it's very convenient for Lisa and saves her a lot of time organizing things.
Keeps us compliant.
Yeah, compliance.
Okay. Here is another discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, these are, item C through L are first readings on policies. There are no motions needed. However, I am just going to briefly run through the policies and what they, the heading of the policy. I don't want to say I'm going to read through every policy. We have the mass Exodus or Exodus bullets. First reading of policy 511, student fundraising. Policy 512, school-sponsored student publications and activities. Policy 517, student disability and non-discrimination. Policy 518, do not resuscitate, do not intubate orders. Policy 519, interviews of students by outside agencies. Policy 520, student surveys. Policy 523, policies incorporated by reference. Policy 525, violence prevention applicable to students and staff. Policy 527, student use and parking of motor vehicles, patrols, inspections and searches. And policy 528, student parental, family and marital non-discrimination. Lisa gets these in and our policy committee, I think. That's Director Lappi and Director Rice will also take a look at these and bring them back to us. And we'll go from there. Item nine, any discussion by board members or anything anybody want to say? Just had the ground, you know, reiterating what Mr. Purdean said. We had the groundbreaking this afternoon and it went well. It was very well attended, I thought. Unfortunate for the rain, but this is the start. We're going to be moving. And there's no turning back.
It was good to see everybody show up that kind of had a finger in helping to get this funded.
Absolutely.
Because we had several legislators, commissioners there, several people from the task force that originally started this whole thing. It was good to see everybody there and whatnot. So, yeah, it was good despite the rain.
Despite the rain. Anybody else?
I'd like to just say thanks to the teachers for this year. Well done. You know, I think you're doing very well and I'm very happy with the way this school district is moving. Thank you.
I can.
I would agree.
I didn't, I didn't get the information. These are just our enrollment numbers. We are maintaining our numbers, which is good. And that's it. Information, graduation party.
Yeah, we got 48 graduates. Is that it? Sound right? 48 graduates, so that's kind of the same. We've had a couple of years ago, it's been longer, so it's kind of like you said, we're maintaining. We got that class of 9th graders that's got mid 70s or, it's fluctuated a little bit, but we're on 70s subs, so we have that class coming up. But yeah, so we've got a good number of graduates. It would be a, it would be a good ceremony in Friday.
Seeing no other business before us, entertain motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Director Randa Soder.
Support.
Supported by Director Rice. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Time is 5:39.